...was sent to the home news Tribune and the Star Ledger on September 22, 2020. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. Okay, at this time, Dr. Brigant, I think we have an energy-saving program presentation by USA Architects.
We do. Mr. Cavassano ready? Going to present?
All set.
Thank you. Is the PowerPoint set up, Ralph?
Oh, we have to... Yeah, we have to just roll down the screen. Public, don't mind my back. And, uh, the board members up here, if you can come this way and sit in the audience, so you can see. The screen's gonna come down here. That should be good.
Showtime, Pete.
Good evening, everyone. Pete Cavassano.
Oh, here we go. There we go. I just didn't want to steal your thunder here. Try and do a little bit like this. Here we go. So, um, when last we were together, um, and I was discussing the addition at Lincoln School to address overcrowding, um, we had a very brief discussion on energy savings and solar energy, and you asked us to go back and, um, you know, look at some things and, um, come back and, and report. So, that's what we're here to talk about tonight, uh, an ESIP. So maybe most of the members or some of the members of the board administration know what an ESIP is, maybe some members of the public do not. But an ESIP stands for an Energy Savings Improvement Program. And it's New Jersey's clean energy program, and it allows public entities, school districts, to pay for capital improvements through the energy savings. It's a, it's a zero-neutral budget way of improving your schools without any capital outlay. Next slide. So what does that mean? A budget-neutral solution. On the left side, before the improvements, we have our energy costs. We know what they are. We've talked to Mr. Michaud, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. And then we have the yearly maintenance costs. That's our pie. The Energy Savings Program, through the use of savings in energy, pays for the improvements. It has reduced maintenance costs, and it is a neutral solution. So again, there's no capital outlay by the Board of Education. Next. Next slide. Here we go. In addition to that, we also discussed solar energy. How does solar energy pay you apart? Well, again, it, we know it reduces electrical costs. It requires no upfront costs. We have a guaranteed known and stable power rate through the company that is going to supply the solar panels and the energy through a, a, a power purchase agreement. It's sustainable, which is great. And in addition to that, uh, and we feel confident that we could put solar energy on most, if not all, your schools. It's preliminary, but we're very confident of that because of the fact that we know historically, the district has done a great job over the years of replacing roofs. There's a lot of roofs that have been replaced. There's a lot of roofs under warranty, and that makes it very advantageous to put solar energy on top of the roofs. We don't want to put solar panels on an old roof. So what are some of the examples of energy conservation member, uh, measures? What can we do with the energy savings? Well, like we said before, solar to expand the program, HVAC equipment, ventilation, indoor air quality improvements, certainly lighting improvements, boilers, building management systems and controls, thermostats, the building energy system to reduce and further reduce energy costs, and the building seal or the envelope, right? Clawing, sealing, and improving the envelope of all the schools. In addition to that, the program provides for 15% of the overall value to do what the district desires to do, and it doesn't necessarily have to be an energy savings project. It could be replacing the seats in this theater, so long as it's not more than 15% of the total value of the project. Next slide. So here are the steps. What are the steps? Step one is independent energy audit, an LGEA audit. Done, complete. The board just completed that a few months ago. We're starting to look at them. We've looked at some, uh, but that is the prerequisite of any implementation plan. Step two, we want to customize the RFP, the Request for Proposals from Energy Companies to come in and partner with the district to improve the capital projects that we're talking about. And we want to tailor that, right, specifically to Edison. What is most important to the district, to the administration, to the schools? And that's what we need to do over the next couple of months to really focus like a laser on what are those improvements. Once that's done and the RFP is out, right, for public bidding, we select an ESCO. An ESCO is an energy service company that we're going to partner with, similar to like a general contractor when you bid it, like that. They're going to come in and they're going to do or oversee the energy savings. Step four is an independent verification of the savings, and that's key because somebody might say, well, how do you know? How can you guarantee the savings? The ESCO will guarantee the savings. It's in the contract, which is very key. We'll start to proceed with the ESA projects, the replacement of boilers, building management. We'll install the solar panels. We'll get, we'll get the contracts for the contractors to do it, secure the financing, and implement the projects. And then the last part is the continuation of the commissioning and the verification every year to assure that the energy savings and nothing more is paying for these projects. Next slide. So, for the district, uh, in working with Mr. Michaud, we know the annual energy expenditures are about 2.2 million for the district. I believe that was, uh, oh yeah, fiscal year, year ago. We don't have the 20 report. Electricity was about 1.4, natural gas, 800,000. Based on that, um, a very conservative estimate that we're looking at is about $10 million of improvements that we could do district-wide. And that's a conservative estimate. We think it could be more than that, certainly more, uh, because we didn't factor in the solar component of it, which could be significant. Next. So what are the next steps, right? The architect, the administration are reviewing the audits. Um, we're in the process now of working with the administration and conducting a district-wide energy efficiency, solar energy, healthy building assessment, uh, which is key certainly in the state of affairs that we are in right now with COVID-19 risk mitigation. Um, and we want to put this together in the next couple of months, probably the first quarter. We'll come back to the board and say, hey, this is the plan that we'd like to implement, and then go out and seek that energy service company for you to partner with. Okay. And there we have it. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, we're going to take board members' questions. Public, I'll have time to, uh, during public comments. Public, I'll have time during public comments. We're not voting on anything. There's no votes. We are not voting on anything tonight. It's just a proposal.
The step slide, please?
Whoever you want to come up, or whoever has questions from the board, if you want to come up to the mic, so everyone can hear it.
So, what are the, the timelines on these, uh, step two and three and, and, and so on?
Step two is a process we're in right now. We believe that, um, we believe that that could be done certainly within the first quarter. Um, the selection of the ESCO, normal bidding, a month, six weeks, that vetting, vetting process, um, the independent verification of, of savings, um, and, and, well, in, in step three, the conservation members and the independent verification, that's going to be a couple of months. Because what, what we're planning, right, the, let's go back to the very beginning when I said LGEA audit. It's a very preliminary 10,000-foot level audit, right? Now, the architect's coming in, taking those very preliminary numbers, and trying to hone it in so that we address the specific needs of Edison. Based on that, we'll ask for contractors, ESCOs, to bid on it. When we select the ESCO, they will then do a very detailed and forensic study of every building, and that's going to take a couple of months. And then once we do that, then it's the normal contracted construction, uh, procedures for replacing a boiler, replacing controls, and so on. It's about a year, I would say.
Okay. So, so, so my question is, you know, coming to the budget of next year, can we put something in our budget to reduce our, our, our budget with potential savings from this? And the other question is, you have that $10 million. What is that $10 million? The lifespan of, of the, uh, the project, or, or what is the timeframe of that?
So, you don't have to budget anything, all right? Because it's budget-neutral.
Yeah, but I want to reduce on it.
Well, you, you, no, you're using the savings to pay for the capital projects. So you're not reducing the budget. You're offsetting the budget. The budget is neutral. It stays the same. And instead of paying energy year after year after year, you're using that savings to improve the capital projects throughout the district. So instead of budgeting more, $300,000 for a boiler, it's budget-neutral. The boiler gets replaced, the budget stays the same.
So how much can I use next year? Because we're going to have boilers that probably need to be replaced. We have, uh, you know, capital improvements, that's a, you know, change, a change up here. Can I use any of that next year? Or is it another?
I think we're going to have to sit down and look at it in more detail. Yeah.
And the other thing is about this, uh, lighting improvements and stuff. The example of energy conservation measures, I don't know which page is this.
See the examples?
Yeah, see the examples? A couple more slides back. Uh, uh, come, come, uh, forward.
There you go.
There you go. So the lighting improvements, can we do them not right now? Because I know there are, um, grants that's available at the state level. You can change all these things to LED. It's basically free of charge. Can we do that?
I would recommend that you do not do it now, and you do it as part of the larger project. And the reason is, when you replace lighting, the return on investment is very attractive, probably one of the most attractive of those. And you use that savings to replace a boiler which might not have as good a return. So you take the very va, the best, the, the low-hanging fruit, the very valuable energy savings, to pay for the less valuable return on investments like boilers. A boiler efficiency, right, is 85%. You know, we might get it to 89%. It's a very small return. But when you talk about an old T8 light versus an LED light, the savings is tremendous district-wide. So you use that savings to pay for others. If you replace the lights now, all you do is replace the lights, and you, you lose that value that the ESCO would want to increase that $10 million to possibly more. So I would, I would partner with the ESCO in the first quarter and be guided by, by them.
Microphone, microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the, uh, when you, you outside, we talked about this. So, uh, this is a district-wide, right? We're talking about solar energies.
Yes.
Put on top of roofs.
Yes.
So, we do have plans to, uh, improve our schools, and you're our architect. You saw our long-term facility plan, right? So, we don't want you to start putting panels on a roof that five years down the road or two years down the road, we're going to, we're going to rip it off, we're going to add another level. So all this needs to be planned together, uh, and so we don't, you know, redo the work.
You don't want to take something?
Correct.
You don't want to take something down, you just put up. I agree 100%. And that's why we're going to need that first quarter to, like I said, focus like a laser on what those needs are, and then go out, because there's ESCOs that would bid on your work and say, hey, we could do this, or we can save that, and we guarantee 10 million or 12 million. We go through that process. You select the ESCO that you feel best with, and then partner with them, and then we review all of that work, so that we don't have the mistakes maybe that happened in the past. That's not going to happen. I assure you that.
Last question? Last question? Um, if we bid it out, do we need to give the whole district to one vendor? We can bid, you know, each building to different vendors. What's your suggestion?
My, my suggestion is one overall vendor. That is the way the program is set up, and that's how we'll proceed. It's, it's under the state regulations that way. So e- essentially, you're, you're, uh, try, you, you wouldn't want to hire two contractors to build the same Lincoln addition, or three contractors to build the same Lincoln addition, right? We want one, one person responsible, one person responsible for the energy savings, one person that's going to guarantee those savings. If we have two, we point fingers at each other.
Well, I did press.
Yeah, but the savings are, the, the savings are the savings, but not, yeah.
One, one vendor.
Well, I, I, I think that because of the size of the project, this is going to be a very attractive project to a lot of the ESCO companies out there. I'm pretty confident of that.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Any other board members have comments? Yes, Mrs. Conway. Just please pass the mic back and forth, so the public can hear you. Garbage cans over there to your right. Yep.
Just to make sense out of it, you're spending money on the left side of the budget, but you're making it up on the right side of the budget. So it kind of works itself out. So it's as if we're getting it for free because we're saving because of our electricity items. Now, my question is, the $10 million is ultimately what we would be saving if we didn't make all the improvements? The capital improvements?
Microphone.
Let's try and work these together. Can we go to slide two or slide three? Am I budget-neutral? Okay, let's start here. Okay, so on the left is what we're doing now. And like I said before, Mr. Michaud, the Board of Ed is paying 2.2 million dollars just in the blue. We don't have the maintenance costs, per se, but that's factored in, and that's what we're paying every year, right? The energy cost to run these old bulbs, and the old boilers, and the old controls, and that will continue on. Now, when the ESCO comes in, they're going to look at what's on the right, and they're going to say that little orange pie, that represents the $10 million. So it's the same pie, but we're going to get new boilers that you would need anyway. We're going to get new lights that you would need anyway, new controls, all that you would need for the same budget pie.
And because of the savings, we can afford to do it.
Correct.
Which is what made it.
Yes. It's, it is, it is budget-neutral. The energy efficiency improvements will pay for the facility upgrades.
Would we ever?
Microphone. Microphone, microphone.
Now I'm being pushy. Will we ever get to a point where we start not spending as much as we're taking in?
Got it. Theoretically, all right, theoretically, just, so let's assume we go from the left-hand side to the right, okay? And that $10 million of capital improvements is done and complete. So 15 years from now, we're still going to be spending less money, less, I mean, we're still going to be, you, you, we're still going to be saving money, but the projects will be paid for, so eventually, you might have to, a downward turn, years from now, but yes.
Because the energy costs would go even further down.
Correct.
Good.
Good. Thank you. Any other board members? Oh, go ahead, Miss. Again, just to the public, we're not approving anything tonight. This is informational. So, just to let you know, nothing's being done tonight, nothing's being voted on. We'll all absorb, this is the first time we're seeing it, as well as you.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick question. Uh, can you explain again what ESIP project size estimate means? And also, if you could explain, this also says in small print that estimate does not factor in solar improvements, so if you could just talk about that. That's all.
Like, three from the, three from the, the bottom there. The energy and savings improvement, let's go to the next slide, one more. Oh, this, this one, right? Okay, so, I'll just do the whole thing. So the annual energy expenditures, the source was your annual fiscal report, and we know we're spending 2.2 million in energy, and we know it's 1.4 in gas, I mean, 1.4 in electricity, and 800,000 in gas. So the ESIP, Energy Savings Improvement Program Project Size Estimate, that's our initial estimate, right? That's, that's our, you know, looking at historical projects, looking at what's spent conservatively. I believe that number's going to go north, right? I don't, I don't want to tell you it's going to be 15 and ends up being 14. I'd rather tell you it's going to be 10 and it's going to be 14. So that's the initial estimate right now, from what we know, and we know we can improve on it. And the reason that I wanted to put that in is that the estimate does not factor in yet the solar improvements. We don't know how large of a solar field we could put at each individual school. And based on that size, we'll have the energy savings at each school, and that will also increase the overall size that allows us to do even more projects. Come on.
Over what period do you think these savings would come up?
It, the, the contract term is usually for a 15-year payback. It's usually a 15-year contract. Solar panels are usually a 15-year contract.
Okay, any other board members? All right, board members, you can return, and we'll roll up the screen, and as soon as we get that done, we'll go to public comments. On resolutions only, please. Thank you, USA Architect. No, you can take, you can leave.
You sure?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
While we're waiting, Mr. Eriko, can I say something?
Sure. Go ahead.
I just want to take a moment to mention that last week, on, on November 18th, was National Educational Support Professionals Day, and I wanted to recognize all the work that our support professionals do on a daily basis in our school district. They do a great job in servicing, um, the needs of our students, and we're grateful for all that they do on a daily basis, and this is one of those opportunities we get a chance to say that. So, on behalf of the Board of Ed, myself, the administrative team, thank you to all of our educational support professionals.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to open up to public comments on resolutions only. Again, the resolutions are listed under, uh, Roman numeral number six, I, I, double I, triple I, so forth and so on, through finance. So who would like to speak on resolutions? Resolutions only. Mr. Patel.
Mohin Patel, Board-elect. Okay, for the resolution on personnel, um, in terms of your hirings that you have included in here, what are our policies in regards to diversification in your hiring processes? What are our policies? Do we have any in writing on how diverse your pool of people are coming in? Or is there anything on anywhere? Because I was just looking through our policies right now, and I didn't see anything in regard to that, so. The other thing is this, there's over 160 pages of policy revisions and new stuff that you guys put online last night, and we're supposed to go through all this and compare it to your other policies from last year to make a comparative of what's being changed. I don't feel that this gap of time in terms of making these changes, or making the resolutions, or introducing a new policy procedures, is enough time for someone to review and logically think what is being asked of in these changes. So I propose that we look this through first, go through any questions we have, before we go on to the next meeting to vote on it, or whatever it is today, or whatever it is. So, that being said, that's one thing. The hiring policies that we have, I want to know if we have something in writing online anywhere, so we could review it and go through that. And, so we're only talking about the resolutions. You're not, we're not talking about the energy savings or anything like that right now, right? For public questions? Are we going to be able to talk about that later?
Um, well, I mean, I guess you could ask questions, but there, we, we still have questions as a board. We haven't approved anything, or, or it's not a resolution to approve, so.
Okay.
There's really not much to speak about at this time.
But they left or are they?
Yes.
Okay.
They could be, they could be back, you know, once we get the process rolling.
Right. Because there are some questions regarding that energy program. I used to work in the energy industry for about 10 years, so I know exactly what he's trying to say. There's, you could break that up and start saving money right off the go, without you having to spend that much money to get everything at the same time, or wait for it to come in. So, I would actually like to be able to talk about that whenever it, it comes to vote, before you vote on it.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, as far as the hiring practices, um, we, we follow, what, the equal opportunity?
Equal Employment Opportunity.
Right.
Act and the reg, the regulations, um, that are promulgated by the Department of Education.
Can I get closer to the microphone, please?
Yeah, no one can hear.
I was warned about this. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we basically follow, um, both federal and state law on equal employment opportunity, um, and there are also Department of Education regulations that the, that the district has to follow.
Okay. Is it online? I believe, I believe it should be, yeah. I mean, as far as EOC or?
Yeah, it's, it's actually, if you go to the Department of Education's website, go to, click on accountability, count, click on the, uh, regulations, and they're all there. And I just don't remember which section. I want to say it's in, it may be 6A, section seven, but I'm not, I'm not sure of that specific section. But there, but it, but it's there.
Okay. And, um, as far as the approval of policies, it says first reading. Are we having a second reading? Oh, okay. So, to answer your question, we will have a second reading after this, uh, vote tonight. So you'll have, uh, time to review it at the December meeting, and that's when it finally gets passed for final approval. Is that an answer to your question, Mr. Patel?
There's three meetings that we have, I don't know if you can, like, you're back on this. So, on the, the, until, until, until August, or November, or June. All the other ones, you don't have?
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll announce when the next meeting is for sure, before the end of the night. It should be on, it should have been updated on the website, but we'll check into that. But yes, this is the first reading approval. There'll have to be a second reading approval. I'm sorry, what are you showing me, Ms. Tyble? The meeting dates on the back? Okay, yeah, the meeting dates are on the back. Yes, absolutely. Mr. Bagia?
Raj Bagia, 113 Harding Avenue, Edison, New Jersey. Hiring policies, uh, I spoke to a couple of board members. I know few of people from Edison have applied, and they're very qualified. They didn't get the calls back from HR, no interview calls, and it's been going on for years. What I've been told is you guys get hundreds of resumes, and I'm going to make an accusations, how come only the family names are being hired? We know they have some connections with here, but the people who have no connections never get interview calls, never being hired. So there's a big question mark for policy.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll announce when the next meeting is for sure, before the end of the night. It should be on, it should have been updated on the website, but we'll check into that. But yes, this is the first reading approval. There'll have to be a second reading approval. I'm sorry, what are you showing me, Ms. Tybalt? The meeting dates on the back? Okay, yeah, the meeting dates are on the back. Yes, absolutely. Mr. Bagia?
Raj Bagia, 113 Harding Avenue, Edison, New Jersey. Hiring policies, I spoke to a couple of board members. I know few of people from Edison have applied and they're very qualified. They didn't get the calls back from HR, no interview calls, and it's been going on for years. What I've been told is you guys get hundreds of resumes. And I'm going to make an accusations, how come only the family names are being hired? We know they have some connections with here, but the people who have no connections never get interview calls, never being hired. So there's a big question mark for policies and how they are being hired right now. And I do want you to address that issue.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public on resolutions only? Okay. Close the public portion on resolutions. Now we're going to vote.
Full comment?
Doing the vote on the resolutions, yes, absolutely. Resolution I, Personnel Labor Relations Personnel Report, motion to approve. Mrs. Maroni, Mr. Shi. Now we have a discussion. Mr. Shi?
Okay, so after this agenda was posted online, we received a lot of comments from the residents as to the, the practices of hiring. And we have folks who mentioned about that, that folks with good qualifications are not being, had a chance to be considered. We don't know if it's true or not. So we hope it's not, hope we follow the policies. So with that said, I would propose the, the board to take a look at some of the, the resumes that submitted for some of these positions. And let's make sure that we're following the, the procedures and processes that we outlined. As we can see, there are a lot of new appointments. Some of the appointments are directly impacting to the students. So we're just going to let that go. And I'm just concentrating on the support staff on the three IT hirings. The concern is mainly on these three. We have a lot of local talents that are IT professionals. And the other thing that the board has tried to do is to try to get, you know, as many local candidates as possible if they qualify. Again, the, the key is they, they must qualify. So what I'm going to propose is to table the, the appointment of these three IT positions, you know, and let's take a look at some of the, the resumes that submitted and just make sure the process that we're following is correct.
So we need a formal motion to table? So Mr. Shi is making a motion to table the three?
That's on page three.
Page three, yes.
The bottom three appointments.
Page three, the support staff, under support staff, those bottom three names, correct?
Yes.
Do I have a second to table?
Board President Eriko, am I allowed to comment on this?
Oh, we're going to have a comment after, if we get a second. Yeah, if we get a second, we'll have a comment. Dr. Chen, second. Okay, comment, Mr. Dr. Bragan, I'm sorry.
In regards to what has been said and what, there's been some public comment regarding the hiring process. I want to assure everyone, since I've been here, which is almost a year now, we've worked really hard to hire people from a diverse background. There's an application process where people apply online. We go through that process sorting out the most highly qualified candidates for all positions. If you look at the candidates since we've been here, who we've hired, we've worked hard to try to make them reflect our student population and our community population when possible. And from people that are highly qualified and have the correct certifications. To make an accusation that somehow that was not followed is not accurate, nor is it valid. We adhere to the strict policies of hiring the best candidates for the positions. If we can hire people from our town, if we can hire people who reflect the complexion of our students in our community, we do so. But to make an accusation because somebody wasn't hired or they didn't get an interview and it was due to anything other than qualifications is inaccurate and something to which I take personal offense as the school leader and chief academic officer. In addition, we're in the middle of a pandemic. 70% of our students are working remotely, a little more than 70%, depending on the schools. We have 17,000 students almost and 2,000 staff members who have devices that need to be maintained. We have networks that need, need to be maintained. We have eight technicians, eight across the entire district to service all those devices, 20,000 devices. And we're going to pause when we have some of these candidates that are recommended to start on Monday when the Finance and Facility Committee meeting met over the summer and decided that these three positions were needed. I, I think it's appalling, I think it's political, and I think it's wrong. And as the chief academic officer, I'm saying that. And the board will vote where they will, but who's going to suffer? Who always suffers when politics get involved in education? The children and the staff. We need these technicians, we need them today, and a pause on it impacts the children. The board has the right to vote as they see fit. That's my two cents.
Go ahead, Mrs. Maroni.
There's another facet here, and that is when you apply for a job, you put down your name, but that doesn't guarantee what race you are, what ethnicity you are. You're not allowed to ask that question when somebody applies for a job, nor are you allowed to ask for a photograph. And you cannot make an assumption on someone's last name, what they are. Because there are so many people now from mixed backgrounds. So I don't know how you propose that you're even going to do such a thing, given that.
Any other board comments before we take a vote on the table? Okay. Roll call on the tabling of those three positions. Mr. Matiker?
No.
Mrs. Budowski?
No.
Mrs. Conway?
No.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
No.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
No.
Mr. Eriko? Yes. Okay, five noes, four yeses, so it does not carry. Okay. So now we need to go back to the original motion, which was made by Mrs. Maroni and Mr. Shi to approve the personnel agenda, labor relations, and report. Roll call. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
All yes, except for I say no to Daniel Mashad's retirement request.
Didn't know we could do that.
Thank you. Dr. Chen?
No to the three supporting staff and yes to everything else.
Mrs. Pang?
Similar as Dr. Chen's, no to the last three on page three and yes to everything else.
Okay. Mrs. Maroni?
Yeah, before I, I give my opinion, people have to speak up louder because I can't hear anything from the board members at the top, so please speak into your microphones. Yes on everything with the exception of Mr. Mashad's retirement.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Shi?
Yes on everything except for Dan Mashad and the three support staff.
Thank you. Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Eriko? Yes on everything except Mr. Mashad's resignation or retirement, I'm sorry, not resignation. You may not be able to retire now. What's the, what's the vote count on that one, Mr. Mashad?
We had four, let's see, four, four, four said, well, actually Jerry said no, that's, that's five.
So you can't retire?
No.
Call the state up tomorrow. I always wondered how that happens. Okay, thank you. Next item for board vote. All right, item two under Roman numeral six, approval of policies first reading, Representative Assembly of Educational Services, the NJQSAC School Safety Security Plan, and reorganizing meeting location revised. Motion, please.
Motion?
Mr. Shi. Mrs. Conway. Roll call. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Eriko? Yes. Oh, yes. Item number three under resolutions, curriculum and instruction guides and professional documentation for November of 2020. May I have a motion? Mrs. Conway? Mrs. Budowski? Roll call. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Eriko? Yes. Oh, yes. Item number four, out of district placements on the pupil's special services. Motion, please. Mrs. Conway and? Mrs. Matiker. Roll call. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Eriko? Yes. Oh, yes. And lastly, finance, approval of minutes for October, Board Secretary's report, and finance resolutions. Motion, please.
Motion?
Mr. Shi and Dr. Chen. Roll call. Mrs. Matiker?
Can I make a comment?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to bring everyone's attention to item number 14. If you guys remembered, at the caucus meeting, the number was for the consultant was 37 and $500. So right now, it's $2,500.
$25,000.
I'm sorry. $25,000, it's a saving of 30%, 30%. So that is, thank to Dr. Bragan for making the call to the vendors. That's our taxpayers' money, and this is what we're going to do for all the vendors moving forward. And we're going to ask them to, to help us to reduce some, some costs, especially those long-term vendors that are being in our district. So, you know, let's just move on and I'll have some comments on that, when it comes to the board member comments section.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. All right, roll call. Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Eriko? Yes. Oh, yes. Okay. We're going to go to committee reports, curriculum and technology, please. That's Mrs. Matiker, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Eriko. The Curriculum and Technology Committee meeting met on Thursday, November 12th via Zoom. In attendance were Gail Palakowski, Baninder Mahveer, Elizabeth Conway, Dr. Yuna Chen, Carol Budowski, and Shivi Madukar. The meeting began at 1:30 PM. The committee discussed a survey that was administered to all middle school students to understand issues they may be facing. The committee requested that a similar survey should be administered to high school students as well. The committee discussed grade 10 PSAT, which will be administered sometime in February 2021. Information for signup, including requirements for transportation, should be going out soon. The committee also discussed the Gifted and Talented Program. And we were informed that students currently have been temporarily moved to a model of independent project with consultation time. They should be going back to the traditional model soon. Regarding technology, the committee was informed that the Chromebooks had not been delivered yet, and they should be delivered any day now. These were Chromebooks for the elementary school students that had been stored at the port. The committee was also informed about changes to curriculum guides. The AP Biology and AP Chemistry course structure were tweaked to meet changes in the AP test. And the Forensics curriculum was tweaked to meet the new science standards. Other items that were discussed were the small group sessions, which are going well in the elementary schools. The committee talked about the importance of posting grades on parent portal in a timely manner for effective feedback before the next quiz or test. The committee also spoke about the need for uniformity or standardization in testing rigor and grading practices, as well as time given to complete work for effective placement decisions. No decisions were made on placement. The meeting ended at 2:30 PM. Mr. Eriko, there was just one thing on curriculum that I wanted to speak about. Shall I speak about now or in the board member comments? This was not discussed in the committee. Okay, thank you.
Any questions from Mrs. Matiker on the curriculum and technology?
Just a quick question, on these small groups, do we know how many, what's the percentage of students participating in the afternoon's small group sessions?
I guess Gail or Baninder could answer that question, or Dr. Bragan?
I don't know off the top of my head. I know we surveyed that data, but I don't have it. I could get it for the board to share.
Is that, is that over 50% or 75% roughly? It doesn't have to be accurate. Can you, can you come to the podium, please?
If you could repeat the question, Mr. Shi, so she could hear it.
Yeah, I just want to know what's the, any rough idea of the percentage of students participating in the afternoon small group sessions?
Gotcha.
Yeah, so the afternoons are filled up for, at the elementary level. It is sectioned out by 20-minute periods. So each, each section, each 20-minute session is scheduled with kids. It depends on what those kids need, but they are seeing every kid every week.
Okay, so?
So it's very structured.
Okay, so it's, it's, not every kid needs to attend the afternoon sessions. It's based on the needs and, and, and the, the curriculum and stuff like that, right?
Correct.
But at least they will attend at least once in, in the, in a week?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
So, sorry, I have a quick question. So is elementary school, the small school session is every day?
Small groups every day except for Wednesday afternoons.
Okay, and how long is that?
Each small group session is 20 minutes.
Group sessions a day?
Four.
Four. So it's an hour. No, more than an hour.
No, it's more than an hour.
More than an hour, hour and 20 minutes.
So four session a day, and they're done through Zoom or?
Through Google meets mostly, some are Zoom.
So how does a student sign up? They have, they sign up in the Google classroom?
They are scheduled by the teacher.
So the teacher make the request to the students?
Right, so let's say, everything's based on assessments in elementary school. So perhaps they notice that a child is having a particular difficulty with decoding, let's say. And they want to do a phonics lesson in the afternoon because they noticed that that child has been having trouble historically with phonics and decoding. So they would then schedule for the next week that I'm going to meet with this child and this group at, let's say, Tuesday at 2:00 PM. And they would communicate that with the parent or guardian through, well, they, they've been setting it up through the parents and with kids. So if they're old enough, the kids are, know their own schedules, but if they're younger, the families would know or the guardians, whoever's taking care of them.
Okay, and we do have the survey that was done at least two, three weeks ago, right? The survey about the small group session? I would really like to see the numbers for, you know, for, from the parent's side, that the parents, when they do the survey, they fill out, how often do, do their kids attend this small group session for elementary and for middle?
It's going to vary by child and the ability, and it can vary from week to week because it depends on the subject area and the assessment.
No, in the survey, there's a question that asking about this small group session. I mean, we, we must have some kind of survey result, a grid or something.
I definitely, I definitely have those results. I, I'll, I'll share it with the full board tomorrow. I don't want to misquote it because I don't remember off the top of my head. But I have those results and I will share it with the full board tomorrow.
That'll be great, thank you.
Or tonight, when I get home.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
So the, I have another question for the, for Shivi, actually. So the, the elementary school Gifted and Talented Program hasn't been going for, since starting of the school year? Or has it been going? Because this is, the number three is kind of confusing. It says temporary move to a model of independent project with consultation time. So do they have a certain time to do, like, because previous, when the school is in normal session, they would have once or twice a week GNT class for each subject. Is that still going on or that's just a change?
This was, this was something that was brought to me by some of the parents, and the committee discussed it. And I don't know if I'm allowed to say this or not, but one of the reasons that they were not getting the traditional model was because of, you want to talk about it?
Sure.
Yeah, because, because there were teachers who were not well, like?
So there is, we, we had to go to a independent project because the truth is, across the state and across the county, there is a shortage of teachers, there's a shortage of long-term substitutes, they, it, it... there is a shortage of teachers. There's a shortage of long-term substitutes. They, it, it's happening every, in every single district. And so we've had to pull some of our teachers based on certifications, whichever certifications they have that can fulfill those leaves. And that was one area in which we had to pull. And so we did pull some of the gifted and talented teachers to fill in those gaps. And we are still providing GNT instruction, so there is an independent project. And part of that independent project is self-directed, but there is a check-in with a GNT teacher as, and as well as that, there's also mini workshops that the students can sign up for that will help them along in the process and help them struck, with the structural piece of the, the project. So we're, we are going to go back to the GNT model. It's just temporary at the moment because of staffing issues.
And COVID-related, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So some of the school, the GNT teacher will pull to do something else, to teach their regular class?
No. Right now, everything is independent model, independent project.
Which means, do they have regular meet sessions every week?
They have a, yes, they have, they do meet with a GNT teacher, but about the independent project, and it's not for the full period of time. It's, it's literally to sit with the teacher to work through, like conferring about what, how the project's going and what the project is and how they can proceed.
So when you go back to the traditional model, what would that be?
When? Sorry, I didn't hear.
And when, and what would that be, the traditional? It looks like this model is what's going to be going on for the next, I don't know how long.
I can't, I, I would love to be able to say next week. But unfortunately, without knowing how long teachers are going to be out or need to be out, I, I really can't guess that at the moment. So, but we will go back to it, and we're assessing where we can consolidate and do the units from that point forward.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Okay, next report.
Wait, Ralph?
Oh, sorry.
I have a question that perhaps Dr. Conklin might be able to answer. I'd like to know how we're following IEPs of students who have OT and PT written into their IEPs. How are their needs being met?
Okay, give him a second to come up.
Hello.
Hello.
So since March of last year, when we went remote, we've been following minute for minute every single student's IEP as it relates to speech, occupational and physical therapy, either remotely or in person, since we came back in September. So there hasn't been a minute that we've missed in terms of what's exactly written in their IEPs.
That's it, Ms. Maroni, Ms. Maroni?
Well, I, I just, I, I think it's a little hard to conceive of, you know, physical therapy.
Online.
Yeah, it's just as it is phys ed, you know?
Understood.
It's the same kind of situation if you were visiting your physician.
Right.
You know, it's, it's, it's unique, it's different, but it is the services that we're required to provide.
Okay, thank you.
So we haven't actually missed one minute.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Conklin. Okay, now we can go to finance and facilities. Mrs. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Arico.
You're welcome.
In attendance was Ralph Arico, Yuna Chen, Shivi Prasad Matikoff, Dr. Bragan, Dan Mashad, Dr. Alderetti, and Will Colabas and myself. Mr. Colabas reviewed the maintenance projects that are in progress or have been completed during the twenty-twenty-one school year, which include projects such as Woodrow Wilson Water Main Diversion Project and the concrete planters for the modular classrooms as protection against vehicular traffic, roofing projects, numerous paving improvement projects, locker replacements at J. P. Stevens and Woodrow Wilson, boiler replacement at Lincoln School, and a fence replacement at Edison High School. The committee discussed with Mr. Colabas maintenance schedules for each school and a sign-off sheet for the staff. Mr. Colabas has already prepared the schedules and sign-off sheets and emailed them to the committee members, very timely, by the way. The committee discussed the building use application and recommended that the policy and regulations be modified to include required security guards and to revise the discount for users of ten or more scheduled sessions to fifty percent of the building use fees. There will be no discount for custodial or security charges. The committee also discussed the available property across from Menlo Park School that is currently available. Dr. Bragan will inquire about the cost of the property and try to determine if the acquisition of the property would benefit our school district. He will report back at a future committee meeting. Dr. Alderetti discussed the new educators' health plan that all new staff members hired on or after seven-one-twenty have to enroll in and remain for seven years. Any staff members that were hired prior to seven-one-twenty have the option of enrolling in the educators' plan or remain in their current plan. The administration at a recent meeting directed Alamo insurance brokers to investigate all options for the twenty-one-twenty-two school year, including self-insurance maybe, implementing a difference card, minimum premium, and seeking competitive quotes from other carriers. Dr. Bragan notified the committee that he had requested that our architect of record, USA Architects, prepare an ESIP energy savings proposal in which the district could make energy savings improvements that would be paid for from energy savings over a fifteen-to-twenty-year period. Dr. Bragan discussed a proposal in which an outside firm would review and assess the district's back-to-school plan and make recommendations for improvements if so needed. Dr. Chen questioned whether the district had any plans to use the COVID vaccine. The meeting adjourned at five-twenty-four P. M.
Thank you, Mrs. Conway. Questions from the board?
Yes, just related to the one that we talked about. This is about the Joseph Deluca Advisory and Consulting Services. This is, I guess this is number six item.
Yes.
So, Dr. Bragan, do we have any, I, I understand they're coming in to pick like six schools. First, we have a, a choice of which other schools they can, they should be assessed. The reason I'm asking is I'm more concerned about some of our special ed buildings. And our parents, they are already tough during the, the normal school year. And with this pandemic, it's added burden for our staff. So at the very beginning of the school year, they were concerned about the, do we have enough PPEs? Do we have enough disposable gowns for them? So I hope this vendor is going to assess specifically on those areas and plus the other schools that, you know, he's going to go visit. And the end of, the, the questions at the end of the day, will we get a report? And from vendors, they will say, hey, one, two, three, four, you're good, and, you know, you know, some of the other things, are you needing improvements? Are we going to get something like that? So if you can comment on that, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Shi, thank you. That's a great question. Next week, we have scheduled a meeting for me to meet with the representatives from Deluca Associates to go over, you know, what the plan is and what they plan to implement. Initially, we selected, and I said six schools because those were our largest capacity schools, our two high schools and our four middle schools. But we're open to discuss and, you know, any, you know, priority that we want to put in place that would best serve the district's needs. Again, the idea was to have a third party to come in and look at our policies and procedures for a restart and coming back to school and make sure we were doing everything according to the CDC protocols, Department of Health expectations, and the Department of Ed guidance. So we're looking forward to that, and I'm sure they'll be flexible and will decide when we meet and go over our policies and procedures, what the next steps would be as far as onsite school visits. In regard to the other question, Mr. Shi, regarding the personal protection equipment that's related to COVID, we started stockpiling this equipment in March of last year when there was a shortage of everything from thermometers, if you remember, from just these kind of masks you couldn't find anywhere, from wipes, from Lysol, any Clorox products. We began in March of last year, working with the township's OEM coordinator in stockpiling equipment. And then when Mr. Colabas became our building and ground supervisor, he continued that practice, building grounds director, and worked on securing things. We used some of the CARES grant monies, and I could safely say today that we have twelve thousand disposable gowns. We have enough masks, both children masks and staff masks, to last at least six months out. We have enough gloves, all different kinds of gloves, nitro gloves. I didn't even know what a nitro glove was, but I do now. Protective glasses, face screens, shields, plexiglass. We basically have anything that anyone would need as far as PPE, cleaning supplies in the district. So I would encourage anyone, as a staff member or a student or a board member, if you hear that someone doesn't have the PPE, we have it somewhere, it just didn't get to them. So either they can call me directly, talk to their principal, but we have everything, and if they don't have it, ask and we will get it. We want to provide a safe and a secure environment as possible. Thank you.
So we had, just have, we have enough little disposables, guns in, 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 in stock, right?
We have twelve thousand disposable gowns.
That's great, thank you.
Anyone needs one, please direct them to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Anyone else on finance? All right, Mrs. Conway, I think I'll let you go again with the Special Education Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Arico. The special ed board committee meeting was held on eleven-twenty-three-twenty at two P. M. In attendance were Falcone Patel, Carol Podolsky, Dr. Conklin, and Dr. Bragan, Dawn Netzel, Nancy Sika, and Erin Madera, and myself. It was a plethora of information. It chose to give the committee an analysis of everything that's being utilized under the circumstances. They must be miracle workers, and I applaud them for all they do. We were given updates on the progress and the numbers of the students that were in and out. We, right now, have forty-six percent of our special ed population in school and fifty-four percent home. We were given also updates on all the resources that were being used and the professionals that were being used. And as Dr. Conklin mentioned, they are up to date minute for minute for all the services that the children have been assigned to have in their IEPs. Amazing. We had an update on the staffing, and as Baninder has mentioned, sorry, Baninder, Mahveer mentioned, they are, have been, had the ability to utilize the staff so everything can be covered so far, and we just need to keep our fingers crossed that it remains that way. But the only challenge that is usually a challenge, but right now in this time and age, transportation is still their biggest challenge of all. But Transportation Department is trying to work miracles, and I applaud them for all that they have tried to do. Our meeting was over at two-forty P. M.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Conway on special education?
Yeah, well, quick question. So I remember last time when, at the last meeting, you mentioned that there was a presentation made to the committee that was very informative. Is that presentation available, can be made available to the, the parents, or that's, that's not appropriate?
That presentation was actually made on the S-PAC committee. It wasn't our board committee meeting.
Yeah.
And I have already spoken to Dr. Conklin, and he's trying to figure out how to make it from the website presentation into a public presentation. But it was fabulous, and I probably won't let him get away with it. I eventually would like to have it that it's good for any parent.
Sure.
To learn from it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Right, Dr. Conklin?
Right.
He agrees. Okay. I just have a comment regarding the parents. You know, you know, I'll, I'll hold it off until, until the, the, the board member comments on this.
Okay, any questions from Mrs. Conway? All right, and last report, Mr. Shi, Food Service Committee?
Yeah, Food Service Committee, we had a meeting on, on Octo, I'm sorry, November twelfth at four-thirty at Education Center. In attendance is myself, Mrs. Peng, Dr. Bragan, and Mr. Mashad. Chartwell representative, we have Jean Sanchez, the regional VP, Patricia Ali Gatto, the district manager, and Lisa Teddy, the, the director of dining services. The committee discussed the number of lunches being served daily since the district hybrid education program has begun, and the average ranges from eighteen-hundred to two-thousand per day. The committee discussed the possibility of providing breakfast and lunch for multiple days that can be taken home by the students or picked up by their parents, and also serving meals for the weekends. And I think we already implement that. It's, it's being done. Chartwells will begin providing multiple meal packs in early December. They will provide three, five, or seven breakfasts and lunches for the students that can be picked up or brought home. The number of meals that they will receive depends on what day it is and whether the student is attending the school or is, or is receiving only remote instruction. I guess for the, for the remote instruction, we'll try to give them, you know, seven-day meals, so they just only need to come once. And for the students who come to school, we try to give them fresh meals, if, you know, maybe just every day or a couple of days. The district is currently providing free breakfast and lunch to all students based on the federal Seamless Summer Option, which was ordered by the federal government due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. It will continue through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. The district receives federal and state reimbursement, reimbursement subsidies to cover the cost of these meals. Chartwell, Chartwells explain that the federal government provides all school-free commodities to use to feed the students, and the commodities can include items such as cheese, meats, and fresh fruits and vegetables. After the Chartwell representative left, the committee directed the administration to prepare an RFP to seek a new food service contract for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. They also directed the administration to admit the capital investment for the RFP. We used to have a half-million-dollar capital investment, which is our money anyway. So we felt that to increase the, the, the competition with all the vendors, we're going to take that out. We can have more flexibility on our side, how we decide how much money we're going to spend for that. And the other thing that was discussed is about the variety of choices for the meals and the variety of drinks. I'm sorry, the, the, the vegetables and fruits. The, the Chartwell agrees to look into, you know, besides apple, they prepare pears and oranges and peaches. And for the drinks, besides apple juice, they're looking to orange juice and, and fruit punches. But the problem is these little containers, it's hard to get nowadays. So, but they have enough purchasing power so they, they can, they can get it done. So that's, the meeting was adjourned at five-fifty-five P. M. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Any questions from Mr. Shi?
I'll just have one.
Mrs. Conway?
Did they explain to you, my concern is these, I know it's more convenient, but I worry about the freshness of the food if we're giving the children to take home multi-days. And I think I even heard at one point it could be up to seven days. How, how do they go about keeping the food fresh?
Yeah, that's actually the, the question we asked them, and they are looking into different menus to make sure that, you know, the, the thing they provide, seven days, they're going to last seven days. Instead of peanut butter sandwich, you get it on Monday, but, but by the time you get to Sunday, it's already mushy. You can't, you can't eat it, right? So they're looking into different menu items, so they will stretch a bit longer for the seven-day meal. Because seven-day is big, so this is mainly for the remote students, and the kids cannot, it's not going to carry them home. So it might be a slightly different menu for the seven days versus the, the daily menu. So they're all looking into it, and that was a question we raised to them.
Okay, so if it's a multi-day pickup, the children aren't carrying at home, someone is coming in for it?
We're, we're hoping, we're hoping the parent's going to go pick up a seven-day meal, because that's a lot, that's a big family.
Has that started yet?
Yeah, I, I could weigh in on that.
Yeah.
You know, due to the oversight of the committee and what the recommendations were, that seven-day pickup plan, right now, the order forms are on our website for any families or parents that want to do that. And in answer to Mrs. Conway's question, some of those foods for the seven-day, as Mr. Shi said, you know, a peanut butter sandwich wouldn't hold for that long a period of time. However, a small jar of peanut butter and jelly with a small loaf of bread is some of, some of the similar things they would do for those seven days. More food that would have a longer shelf life. So the first seven-day pickup is next Wednesday. So the first seven-day pickup is next Wednesday, December second. And the seven-day meals will be boxed, and they are only for parent pickup. You know, with an automobile, that you're not going to be carrying those, because there's no way our students could carry those home. And, you know, I'll try to take a look when December second, I'll let you know. I'll take a picture and show you what the food is in there. But it's different than what they would do on a daily basis, and that's what we struggled with when we had these conversations at the Food Service Committee, that on a daily basis, you try to provide it regularly and fresh food every day for the children so that, you know, we think it's something they would enjoy and it was nutritious. When you provide the food for multiple days, obviously, it has to have a longer shelf life, and it has to be somewhat of a different nature. So Chartwells is aware of that, you know, they took the direction of the committee. They've been very responsive at this point. And it also came from our committee members and some parents that requested, can I get the seven days? So kudos to the committee and putting it together, and we'll see how it goes. Like everything, we're going to try it, we're going to do our best to meet the needs of all of our, our families that are food insecure at this time. The order line is currently on the website now, if you want one of those seven-day packets, which the first distribution's December second, and I believe that's a Wednesday of next week.
Yeah, I think, I looked at the website, I think the form is due tonight. So if folks are on the, on a call, you have not submitted the form, please do so. Okay.
Good.
Yeah.
And just my final question, what is the percentage of food that's being distributed? Have the children and the families benefited from the food? That it goes to everybody rather than just as in the past? Do you know what the percentage of people participating is?
Well, we have eighteen to two thousand students, eighteen hundred to two thousand students per day. We're hoping with the, the multiple-day meals, the one-week meal, we can increase the participation. Hope I answered your question.
If you just take the two thousand divided by seventeen thousand, participation is about twelve percent right now.
I can do that.
Yeah, we, we hope, we hope the participation will, will go up.
Right.
And, you know, we, we want the kids to be fed, and, you know, that's, that's what we want to do.
I would suggest maybe having some kind of demonstration that can go on the website so that the parents could actually see the variety of foods, and they might step up if they see what the choices are. They might be more interested in just looking at a menu.
Okay, yeah, sure. Good suggestion. We're, we're looking to. Dr. Bragan, can we, can we do that? I'm sorry, I shouldn't be answering that question.
Absolutely, absolutely. And just, you know, our daily attendance with the hybrid instruction, we had about, I think today's number was two thousand four hundred ninety-one students in the buildings. So if we're serving eighteen hundred to two thousand meals, I'm not sure we did that math right, Mr. Sheehan.
Well, I did it based on the whole population.
On seventeen thousand, yes.
But if you do it, if you do it based on...
I think the penetration is closer to seventy-five percent if you use that number.
How many students we have in this?
Two thousand four hundred ninety-one today.
Oh, then I have a question, if you're changing the numbers.
So that's eighty percent.
Do the students that are remote get to order food?
Yes, they do. The form, the, the seven-day package is mainly for the remote students.
So then it could be a comparison of two thousand to seventeen thousand.
Right, correct.
Yeah, we, we really, we really hope that, you know, the, the numbers go up.
That's why some parents requested, can I get seven days and I'll pick up? We, we think we'll have more participation if we do that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. President's comments, I think, we're up to? Okay, update, upcoming meeting dates, announcements. On Thursday, December seventeenth, is our caucus meeting. That will be at Edison High School at seven PM. That's kind of a sad day for me, it's the day my dad passed away. And Tuesday, December twenty-second, is the public meeting at seven PM at Edison High School. And then planning into next year already, believe it or not, get rid of twenty-twenty. Reorganization meeting is Monday, January fourth, at the Edison High School Auditorium at seven PM. So everyone knows the next three meetings, and hopefully that'll be published on the website. Okay, now we're going to go to public comments, and Ms.?
Public comments or board member comments?
Don't we go first?
Board comments.
Board member comments.
Oh, sorry, did I miss something? Oh, I'm sorry, board member comments, sorry.
She was so excited.
I was trying to get you out of here. All right, board member comments, I'm going to start with Mrs. Maroni. Anything?
Well, I would just like to wish our students, all of them, our staff, and all of you out there, parents, students who are home studying, a very happy Thanksgiving.
I don't know whose phone is on, but if you could silence it? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, that's all right. He's trying. All right, thank you, Mrs. Maroni. Miss, Mrs. Patel?
Yeah, I was just, wanted to request Dr. Bragan to share the results of the survey with how many percentage of parents signed up for remote and how many kids are going to be in person this, for this semester coming up?
I think he said.
Well, I know it started, but...
I think he said he was going to share it tomorrow with all of us, all the survey results.
No, you're asking for a different survey.
Oh, different, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Patel, the difference between the first marking period and the second marking period for parents that selected to be totally remote or in-person was a net gain of in-person of one hundred students approximately.
So we have about a hundred more students attending school than we did the first marking period, overall. It was distributed throughout the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Chen?
Nothing.
Mrs. Pang?
No.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yeah. So first is a quick question for Dan. Dan, when do we get our annual audit report? Because we're getting to the end of the year for the last school year. We get it next month?
Generally, it's due by the fifth of December, but the state has extended it until January twenty-first. So I'm not sure if we're going to have it in December or not, we may have it in January.
Okay, the, the reason I'm asking is normally the, the budget process starts in, in January, right? So we want to know how much money we have left and how much we're going to transfer into this new budget.
Right.
So is it possible we can tell our auditor to, you know, speed up a little bit?
Give him a call tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Then the other thing is about, what I was just talking about, is about the, the PPEs and, and the, the cleaning in school. So that's part of this, I hope this vendor that will go look into, you know, our protocols and how frequently we clean the, the schools and, you know, do we have enough, you know, PPE? I hope we do. And the other thing that was brought to my attention is about the substitutes. And we have a, quite some staff members who, you know, has to take some days off here and there. And we have substitutes who come in to cover the, the class for that teacher. But for some of those classes, we actually have a para that's in there. And the para actually knows the material better than the subs just coming for a couple of days. So my question is, I know because they're paras, or we, they're, they're not, what you quarter, certified to be subs. That's what I told, I, I don't know if the policy is there. Is it possible, if, if that, if that is a correct statement, is it possible we can have our paras to get certification as, as sub? So when something happens in his or her class, the para can step in as a sub instead of a, a para and to cover that class. It, it's, it's much better than someone who just come in for, for a day. So that was just a suggestion. I don't know if that's, that's doable or not.
We would definitely look into that. Many of our paras are already substitute certified and have the sixty college credits required to get that sub certificate. And a number of our para professionals are actually certified teachers as well. So that when we can, we do do that, and we will encourage more. And if there's someone that's eligible for the sub certificate, that's a para, and doesn't have it, we will try to put that in place. I know we talked earlier, Mr. Sheehan, we're going to try to get it, as many substitute teachers as we can into our pool and kind of have an open enrollment for that, because, you know, we do need substitutes. We, we needed them in the best-case scenario, and we need them even more, you know, during this pandemic time.
Yeah, thank, thank you. So, yeah, if, if we can have these subs get some certificate, then they come in as a substitute rather than a sub.
Do a sub.
Yeah, so we maybe swap, swap the roles and stuff, but they, they know the material, because they've been in the class for, for the whole semester.
Agreed.
So that, that was just a, a suggestion. And the other thing is about these, the new survey, these, uh, remote learning and the in-school. I guess for schools, that's slightly different. You know, one school you might have a little bit more people versus the other school you might have a little bit less. So was there any consideration for, I, I don't know which school that, you know, that has the highest people coming in for in-person, was there any consideration of that school going to A-B schedule? Meanwhile, the school that has less students will come in for the in-person, you know, that can go for four days. What's your thought on that, Dr. Bragan?
Well, we, we did do that on the first marking period. We had several schools, I want to say nine, that were in the A-B module, where some students came on Monday and Tuesday, and others came on Thursday, Friday. But those were the families that signed up to come, and unfortunately, that was over three thousand families. They didn't all come on a regular basis. So when we got to the practicality of who was showing up and coming into the classrooms, often it was much lower. So when we looked at the numbers, when we calculated who had selected to come in-person for the second marking period, which as I said, was approximately a hundred students more than the first marking period, we looked at all the classroom sizes, and we had measurements as far as square footage, as well as making sure all the students and staff were six feet apart, and we can maintain that. It became apparent that we could accommodate all the requests to be four days a week, and we didn't need the alternate schedule. So while Linden Out Elementary School has as high as maybe forty percent of the students attending, and a John P. Stevens has somewhere around ten percent of the students attending, we can accommodate a four-day schedule at both of those schools, because the rooms are big enough, and we could accommodate that. There were one or two outlier classes that had to be moved, because maybe there were nine students in that class, and the room could accommodate safely, socially distantly, using social distance in eight, we moved that classroom. So as of today, in all the district, in all the schools in the district, we can go four days a week and keep the students socially distant. And what we found, especially for some of the elementary schools where there were a lower number of students, for example, on Monday and Tuesday, what ultimately happened, there were two students in a third-grade class. And then on Thursday, Friday, there were another two or three students. It's much more appropriate for that group of children to have five students four days a week. And when we can do that and social, and be socially distant, we chose to do that. So, and the parents, you know, while this pandemic still exists, we're asking them to commit, and the students for the entire marking period. So the parents that committed to be in-person for the second marking period is not going to increase. So I don't see a need for us to go to A-B at this point, even though some schools have more numbers than others. We can still accommodate them.
Okay, thank you. As long as we can, we can accommodate as enough social distance for, for school like Linden Out's example that you have, then that's, that's fine. So just want to throw that out. And the other thing is just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and please observe the CDC guidelines. So, you know, be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Ms. Matiker, anything?
Yeah, just, just something on homework, really. I know that on December fifth, we have the SATs, and just had a little request if the school, we could have a policy where the schools go a little easy on the week, weekend, where we have, you know, major exams like SATs or APs. So students get a little bit more time to rest so that they can perform well on those exams, and especially for eleventh and twelfth graders. And also, you know, around the time when they have to do the college essays, especially for the twelfth graders, if we can focus a little bit on how the homework is assigned, because sometimes it could be just, you know, every teacher giving homework only for forty minutes. And if it is five teachers who give forty minutes homework, that, that easily, you know, will take up approximately five hours of your time. So if the, if we can have some type of a system where, when a teacher assigns homework, you know, maybe Parent Portal or something, and I think this is kind of more long-drawn, where there is a system which kind of calculates the approximate time taken to complete work, just to be fair, so that nobody is inundated with like five hours of work after school, and especially during the time when you have these major exams. So I would hope that we can look into that, because, I mean, GPA is important, but also doing well on the SATs and AP is equally important. And even more important is, you know, just being well-rested and doing the best that you can do and that you have the potential for. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. Erica.
Thank you, Ms. Matiker. Mrs. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Erica. I'd just like to take the time to reach out to everyone in the community to acknowledge our staff and the almost impossible job that they're trying to fulfill. Last Thursday was the ESP celebration of all our support personnel. And I just can't tell them how much I truly appreciate the work that they have been doing to help support our district. The teachers have probably turned into miracle workers, and they don't even realize it. I'm sure when they, their heads hit the pillow at night, it's instantaneous going to sleep and bringing their brain down for some kind of refresher. So I would like to take the time to speak to each and every one of them, plus not only our teachers and our paras, but I'm sure the secretaries and the custodians and the security guards and the administration of what's going on during such a horrendous time. I just can't say enough about how much I and the board appreciate each and every one of you. And I wish you a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope and pray that you do take a couple of days off to let your brain get refreshed before coming back next Monday. And I also would like to applaud the students that are going along with all of this craziness right now, both in the elementary, the high school, and even at the college level. So again, I thank you all for all you do. I, it's easy for me to sit up here and thank you, but I truly appreciate each and every one of you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mrs. Conway. Mrs. Bedoski?
Yes, I also want to echo what Mrs. Conway said about the teachers and all the staff and all the people that are working about a hundred and seventy-five percent of your normal or an expected reasonable capacity. But I really wanted to focus on the children, and I kind of echoing what Mrs. Matikar said about leaving time for the students who have college essays, who have SATs and different things like that, putting pressure on them. Right now, every child in our school district has extra pressure on them. And they need the time and the space for their own personal, emotional, and social wellness. And we need to remember that that is the most important thing. Getting them through this pandemic is not just about them getting to the colleges they need to get to or passing all the tests. It is letting them come out of this feeling good, having a little happiness. And some of the little things that seem so meaningless to us that the teachers may be spending time with their students on are very, very important. They need to come through this. I have family members of my own who are in school, and two young men, and both are now fully remote. One is a computer whiz, and he loves it. He just has an extra gaming screen on the ti-, on the side, is breezing through the work, but he's having the time of his life. The other one's going to be an auto mechanic, and he's tried the same course three times. And this time, his district not only did it online, but presented it a different way. And he's going to be an auto mechanic now. So we want them to feel good about themselves, we want them to learn, that's very, very important. But if they don't feel good about themselves, if they don't get through this with the right attitude and know we're all behind them, it's not going to help the facts that we teach them. So just keep remembering, as I used to tell a superintendent of ours years and years ago, they are little tiny children, the twelfth graders included. And they need to be, they need us to help take care of them and support them. Thank you. And happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Bedoski. Lastly, I just have a couple of things to say. This has been a very difficult time since last March, obviously, for everyone. We had some good news and, you know, not-so-good news, I guess. I attended a football game past Friday, Edison High School Eagles, with a great win over a very good Hillsborough team, fifty, forty-nine. It was a scoring fest. Happy to say, I believe, between the two high schools with our... Happy to say, I believe between the two high schools with our activities, Mrs. Budowsky and Mrs. Conway talking about our social, emotional being, especially our students, we got in probably 85 to 90% of our sports schedule with very few problems or very few cases. And again, the cases in our schools are very low compared to the community. It's been very difficult for everyone, board members, community, teachers, staff, you know, parents, children, you know, it is very difficult to be locked up and not be able to go see your friend whenever you want to or take that bike ride or hang out at Burger King or McDonald's or wherever they go and socialize, you know, go to a football game. The football games were very, in my opinion, poorly attended because of people are afraid. You know, I know both high schools made very clear expectations. They must announce 15 to 20 times a game to social distance. People must have a mask, you know, no contact, that type of thing. So hopefully we get through this soon. There's some good news on the horizon is what I'm hearing, so I'm hoping that is the case. And hopefully by the spring, and I think I spoke to someone today, hopefully by September, we'll be back to normal. I pray that, I wish that for everyone and I hope that happens. Lastly, I'd like to wish happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I know I did it last week too. But I want to make sure, I want to first wish a happy Thanksgiving to all my board members for working with me over these 11 months. It's been an experience to hope. Thank you. Dr. Bragan? And the entire staff from bus drivers to aides, parents, students, security, grounds, secretaries, facility managers, custodians, you name it, we have a great staff here in Edison. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
I think I asked Fall. She had any comments?
If not, Fall.
Well, I have a follow-up actually, since you asked.
Go ahead.
I wanted to ask about the details of the survey, Dr. Bragan, just going back a little bit. You mentioned that there's 100 more students now than there were before that signed up. Is that as of today or when the survey results came out? I want, I guess I want to know if the number of students is increasing daily or decreasing?
It's a great question. The number was when the survey was required to come back, which was before the break. I forget exactly what that date was. When we came back on November 17th was the beginning of the new marking period, so we had to give the principals and everyone in time to prepare and make sure we had the classes scheduled. And it was about 100 students difference. Now, as far as the students coming on a daily basis, it's been a little lower because, you know, whether students not feeling well or not, we encourage them to stay home rather than come to school for fear that they may be sick. But some parents are keeping their students home on different days than they're not and because we, we don't want to encourage it, but because we can seamlessly transition between being in-person and remote, some people are using that option probably more freely. So that's why I'm trying to get the daily counts every day. Initially, we had about 3,200 students selected to come back and today's actual attendance in the building was 2,491 students.
Good.
Well, President, I missed one question. So can I? Ralph?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So it was just related to that DeLuca consultant, I mentioned that Dr. Bragan, what did is one phone call, we saved 30%. So my question is more to hope. If, will the board members allow to call the contractor? What I was thinking about is, let's get a list of the vendors that have been in our district for a long time and each board member pick up, you know, let's say, five vendors, we call them up, we'll say, hey, you know, we're in a tough time, you've been in the district for a long time, will you be able to work with us and reduce your fee? Something like that. Is that legal or that's, I'm just, is that, can that be done or not?
That would only be an administrative action. Board members should not do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now.
One question, sorry, I'm very sorry, but I forgot to ask one question. Dr. Bragan, this is a question for you. I just wanted to know, what is the protocol if a student is in-person and for some reason they are not able to come to school, suppose they have kind of mild, you know, cold or something and they attend classes remotely, are they marked absent or are they marked present and if they attend classes remotely?
They should be marked present, but we have two different attendance protocols, one for students that are in-person and one for students that are remote. Again, if someone's not feeling well, we would encourage them to do that just on the air on the side of caution. But we also don't want people flip-flopping every day back and forth. It'd be really difficult to manage with the classroom. But should that happen, they inform their teacher, I can't make it into that, I'm going to participate remotely and I anticipate that that's not going to be an issue. If it's an ongoing issue, we would say, well, then why don't we just switch it to remote, which we have made that. Any student that's in-person and for whatever reason is uncomfortable, their family wants them to stay home, they have that option to switch to remote, but we haven't afforded the same option to switch the other way because as I said earlier, with the social distancing in the classrooms, if six students in one class decided, I want to come from remote in-person, that would mess up that dynamic. So that should be able to be done. Yes, Mrs. Madiker?
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments?
Are you sure?
Again, I remind everyone they have six minutes, name and address, and please be respectful of everyone. Thank you.
Hi, Marilyn Scaletti Clark, 2 Ethel Road, Edison. So every year, I am a teacher at Washington School and every year we collect food for Thanksgiving food drive, just like many other schools do. But this year, due to COVID, we were unable to organize that in a safe manner. So we had students who typically get Thanksgiving baskets who were not. So I came to the meeting tonight to publicly acknowledge and thank a local business. The Give Back Initiative LLC, which is a company that uses Facebook as their fundraising platform, graciously donated 15 Thanksgiving baskets to some Edison families. So this business is run by a few Edison moms that are helping local organizations fundraise while they're also giving back to the community of Edison. These baskets were ginormous. They were huge. They contained everything a family would need, all the traditional Thanksgiving foods, paper goods, and huge turkeys. So they did donate 15 baskets to Edison families. I just want to say that Washington School did receive some of the baskets and when the families came to collect them, they were so grateful and it just warmed our heart. So I came here today from school, haven't gone home yet, just to publicly acknowledge this business and thank them so much for always thinking about the kids.
Thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, could you tell us the name again?
Yeah, sure. I would love to. So it's called the Give Back Initiative LLC and they use Facebook as their platform to fundraise.
Thank you. Mr. Patel?
Mohamad Patel, Board of Delect. So just a few questions real quick. In regards to item number 14, the approval of Joseph A. Delacca Advisory, does the county or the state have someone that comes and assess us already or is this on top of something that we're already doing and we just want to make sure that it's a third-party audit? One thing. And the other thing is, should I go?
Ask all your questions first.
Okay, so that's one question. Question number is for the 15, where it says the right-of-way agreement that we have. It's open-ended. Is there, is there in that agreement somewhere that we have a cap that they cannot go above any kind of cost that is going to be related to that change? So do we, do we have anything in writing in that agreement that says they could charge us a million, 2 million, 3 million? It's open-ended basically. That's why I want to just make sure that we're covered in regards to that question. And item number 19, which is the obsolete items for all the computers and everything that have been thrown out, are we recycling and if so, are we getting any refunds back from the recycle and if so, what is that fund used for? Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody and thank you all teachers for doing what they do too.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
I can answer the first part of that question regarding whether the county or the state has any oversight of the return-back policies and procedures that we're incorporating in each of our schools. As far as I know, they don't. You know, their oversight basically consists of things such as the NJQUSAC, which is New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, which we're actually processing now when we approved on the agenda tonight, the Statement of Assurances for the DPRs. But I, as far as I know and from my experience and interaction at the county level and with the State Department of Ed, they don't have anything specifically set up for that. That's why when I met these gentlemen from, and women from this group, I thought it was a great idea to get a third-party oversight for something that's really fairly new and novel for us. As much as we want to believe we're doing a great job and we know what we're doing, it's always good to have another set of eyes come in, take a look at it to ensure the safety and security of our building. So as far as I know, right now, the state and the local Department of Education's are not, County Department of Ed's are not doing that. Regarding the easement, Mr. Mashaw, you want to talk to that?
Yeah, what we do is when we get our electronics, for the most part, we keep them in the warehouse on pallets and as soon as we get a large number of them, we actually put them on gov deals. We did that a couple, about, I think it was last year, and we actually got over $200,000 for our MacBooks that we put on there. So we try to, try to get those, as much as we can back on those.
Thank you. And also regarding the right-of-way, we are only authorizing that amount that's in there, not a penny more. So if it does happen to be more money, which we're hoping it's not, that's all we can spend at this point and until it's, excuse me?
The deposit?
Yes, that's, that's the max we can spend. Yep.
I'm pretty sure on that, that's with the Middlesex County Water Department, that that's the full amount and unfortunately, no one can touch those pipes. Mr. Mashaw, you correct me if I'm wrong? We couldn't do it if we wanted to have our own people do it, that we have to use them. So we're kind of beholden to whatever price they determine. Is that accurate, Mashaw?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Venkata Bandi, 318, Detective Drive. Hi, I'm representing at least a couple of parents associations or parents groups in the WhatsApps and also Facebook. This question is to Dr. Bragan. He raised an objection and in fact, he called it as a political. I think, Dr. Bragan, you have a right to object and, but I'm having an objection on the political comment that you made. The questions that were raised by my colleagues were not political. At least 600 parents were there in three WhatsApp groups has raised this, that the hirings before you that were done were political. They were biased. And in fact, they were scared that there will be retribution if they bring this like a grievance cell. There is no grievance cell. If they put the grievance cell, there will be retribution. And in fact, we have reached to the members of the personal committee and they didn't have answers to. And one thing that bothered us was, personal committee is only going to interview or look after any BOE admins or supers and above, not the school hirings. But in any corporate world, personal committees does have a visibility on who's been hired, when they have been hired, what salary they've been hired. And at least I feel that personal committees should have this knowledge and they should address it before it comes here so that the noise can be reduced. I would like to give three examples. One is a HR person was hired because of bias and the salary was a, you know, double salary or, you know, exorbitant. And if sports director was not hired, then student, the assistants, a master's kids just completed, applied and they didn't get interview calls. I think there are a lot of allegations. I think it shouldn't come over here. I think the personal committee should be able to answer or there should be a grievance cell where anonymous people should communicate. Me having legal knowledge, I could easily ask them to go to EUOC and honestly write up an audit or an inquiry. I don't want to do this because it's my school and at the end of the day, taxpayers are paying that money. I definitely wanted the personal committee to take the ownership of each and every hire and have the details and the last but not least, don't give this 109 pages document one day before. If you can distribute three, four days before, that would really be helpful. The second thing, Dr. Bragan, the grades are not being updated. I'm sure that some of the board members has brought it up. It's one and a half months back, I'll take one high school pre-calculus teacher, I don't want to name it, didn't even upgrade the grades for six weeks. What the consequence was, let's say a student made a mistake six weeks back in one of the pre-cal formula and if they are not given back in six weeks, the same mistake will slip in and now the term one is over, marking period two started. So I think we are doing a great disservice to the students for not telling them within a week what mistake they have done. I think there should be some kind of performance review on the grades update with, if it is not done within seven days or 10 days. I think some parents are suggesting, if any teacher doesn't have a time to review, update the grade, don't give the test. I think that is a simple solution. If you don't have time, don't give the test to the kid and you know, the mistake cannot be repeated. And the last one for the College Board SAT, December 5th, there is, JP has a SAT. I spoke to some of the BOE members, they said they were not sure whether it is a school choice or College Board choice. College Board, I wrote to them, they clearly said, if the school continues, we'll continue. If the school cancels, we are canceling it. On August 29th, JP Stevens, sorry, Edison High School, they canceled it. But the message communicated to us, no, 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 we didn't cancel it, it's College Board canceling it. Can we get some clarification? Who is canceling what exam? Because August 29th, we missed the date and we don't want to miss the December 5th date. Can we take some kind of responsibility saying that we are calling the cancellation rather than the College Board cancellation? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go in reverse order. Regarding the cancellation of the SATs, we will take ownership for that and if conditions continue as they are and we're allowed to have it, we will have it. I forget exactly the parameters for that first cancellation, but we did work with the Edison High School principal and I think we scheduled two additional SATs. Is that right, Mr. Ross?
That's correct. We had the SATs for three straight weeks in the coming months.
And I know from my own child, you know, I have a senior in high school as well, that a lot of the SATs were canceled across the state so that we provided availability at Edison High School and as well as JP Stevens to help address that need. So I don't anticipate that being canceled unless powers outside of me tell us that we have to do that. Regarding the grades not being updated on a regular basis, I can support that and we will address that. If any parent has an individual concern, please go to the teacher, the principal first, and then you can go directly to me. I agree, if children, if people don't get feedback, they can't adjust their performance accordingly, especially if it's in between assessments. So the expectation would be those grades and that feedback is in a timely manner so that students can adjust and see where their performance needs improvement and maybe get that extra help so the next assessment will be more successful. We will look into that today. Regarding the Personnel Committee, I can't speak to what Personnel Committee members are aware or not aware and what they share with the public, but I'm going to tell you this and I'm going to tell you straightforward, as a white gray-haired guy that's 55 years old, that people could look at him and say, he hires people that are white gray-haired people and he grew up as a privileged person or whatever you would say about my complexion or the upbringing that I had. I work really hard to hire the best people. I don't care about their race, I don't care about their ethnicity, I don't care about their religion because I want the best people to work with your children. My children don't go here to be with your children. And when we can, we try to look for people that reflect the complexion of our community. I think it's important to have role models that are reflective of our society and the town in which we work. And we do, I've been here since about a year now and I've worked really hard to continue to try to do that. I've worked with the Personnel Committee and we haven't, I don't think I've tried to pull anything over their eyes or done anything that was any degree of malfeasance. I want to be above board, I want to hire two things, the best people and the most diverse population I can because I think that's what makes this country great. The diversity that we have in this town is second to none. People talk about diversity in other communities and they're often communities of one particular minority or not. We are an extremely diverse community. It is our strength that we can pull from all different resources. It's also one of our weaknesses that we have to learn to get along and understand the strengths and weaknesses that come with each group. And perhaps there are times we have to look different ways to support different groups, both academically and in employment. So we will do that. We do work with the Personnel Committee. The policies that are set forth and placed by the board is any position that's assistant principal or higher, the Personnel Committee principal or higher, the personnel committee does interview candidates. And they give me the charge to bring them finalists, which I've heard, we've brought good finalists and people that they can look at and review. If at any point the personnel committee wants to delve deeper, look at resumes and do that, I'm not adverse to that. I have nothing to hide. I'm a transparent person. I want to do the best for all of you, for this community, and I'm committed to that, sir. So you have my word on that. I can't speak to what happened before I got here, but I could speak to moving forward. We're going to do our best every day. Thank you.
Thank you. You have to come back up to the mic, please. Excuse me? No, no. Yes.
I think, Dr. Bregan, I just want you to acknowledge that we are non-political. We are just parents group. We want the best for the kids. So whatever we ask here is non-political, even though any BOE members, you can ask them, they will say that we have not belongs to, we didn't, we didn't belong to, we don't belong to any political party. That is number one. The second thing is the grievance cell. The retribution and retaliation is the key. If somebody goes and says to, let's say the Ralph, I'm picking up, saying that, okay, I applied, I've not got a call, and if Ralph brings my name, so I'm, I may be, you know, I should be worried that, you know, I may not get called further because there will be retribution. So is there any grievance cell that where anonymous mails can be sent so that any personal committee member can review it? I'm not saying that special committee and extra cost, but a personal committee president in charge should be able to go and look at the resume saying that a PhD guy was applied and a college freshman was applied and why you are taking a college fresher. There should be reason. In corporate world, I had a lot of people, I do take that fresher better than a PhD guy because of the work qualification. But as long as there is a reasoning and justification that somebody says that, yes, we looked into it, that should be fine. Because if there is no grievance cell, then we have to direct the people to go to the EUOC, which I don't want to go on the taxpayers' money.
That's fair enough. And I'll take ownership for using the word political before, maybe that wasn't appropriate. So I apologize for that. I didn't mean that. And the other thing regarding a grievance, if somebody addresses something to me, have them send it to me. There will not be any retribution. I guarantee you that. That's not how I am. So if there's a question or concern, have them direct it to me directly, we will address it and there will be no retribution. I promise you that.
Thank you.
Sir.
Tony, Piscopo, Pine Street. You know, over the summer, I mentioned how I felt the school needed more IT people because students needed help. Parents were complaining, students needed help because things were going to be progressing forward. And I think it's really irresponsible that three board members, and this was mentioned on a WhatsApp group to Mr. Shi and, oh, I hope your team can do this for us. Well, obviously, that was proven tonight by having Mr. Shi and two other people who are his team also agree to table this with the IT groups. How dare you? How dare you take away something that the kids and the parents need during this time of COVID where they need help at home with their computers and technology? We have been waiting for so long for this time for IT people and you just want to table it. For what reason? What reason? You talk about practices of hiring practices that are our issues. Well, where's the proof? We have other people that talk about hiring practices, issues on the board or in the school district. Where is the proof? Okay? I don't know, you know, gentleman says he is representing WhatsApp parents. I'm on WhatsApp. He's not representing me. We never took a vote to say you represent and come here. Okay? So, you know, Mr. Shi and other two board members, what's the real reason why you didn't want to bring IT people on? You guys accuse the superintendent of unfair practices. Why don't just tell them, we don't trust you with the job you're doing? Just tell them straight out. I mean, give me a break here. You hire somebody to do a job. You have board policies all set in place to hire people. Change the policies then. You don't like it? Don't make accusations that things are possibly being done wrong in hiring processes? Change it then. That's your prerogative to do that. But for three board members to deny students of help that they need during this time is totally disgusting that you guys would even do that. Mr. Shi has said so many times to me, it's all about the kids. Well, if it's all about the kids, then give them the services that they need. Okay? And yeah, I agree, there could be some politics going on. I don't know what it is. But it's time to stop playing the politics. The election's over. You won. Okay? So stop the politics. Let's do right by the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph, can I ask a question? Can I? Ralph, Ralph?
Hold on, hold on, wait, wait, wait.
Can I respond? Shannon. Mr. Dipascal, can I ask you a question then? Do you know any of those three people who's been hired?
Over the summer, I was looking for a job. I saw on the Edison School District that there was a tech position open. I was going to apply for it, but I got a job. So I told my nephew, apply for the job. He did. He had four interviews. He's well qualified. You want to see his resume? Look at his resume. He did it all on his own. I didn't do anything for him. I didn't tell anybody, hire him, because I knew there would be questions. He got hired? Why? Because he's qualified. If you have something different, then tell me something different. Why else was he hired? Tell me.
I don't, I don't. I'm simply asking a simple question that, do you know any of those three members?
You know, he's my nephew.
Thank you, thank you for answering that. And also, I'm, I have a question, do we know, do you know that you said we need technology people, but our students have personal laptop for the last 10 years?
I had parents ask me for help personally, okay?
I agree, that's totally possible.
You see it on Facebook that they need help?
Yeah.
So what's the problem?
Do we have a huge number jump in people, in students who need tech, technology help?
Obviously, you don't know technology, okay? You don't know technology. I'm a professional technology person, works for a corporation. Our people who are adults need a lot of help. I help them. So if adults need help, would you think that kids would not need help? Do you pay attention to the parents that are, that are saying they need help? Obviously, you don't.
I'm just saying, this, kids have computer for the last 10 years, have personal computers.
They are home now.
They're home. Do we have data to back that up, that we have a huge number, huge number increase in students who needs technology help?
Again, have you, have you had parents ask you for technology help?
No.
Okay, well, I've had a lot of parents ask me.
How many?
We had a group of people set up a Facebook group for help with technology. So really, you're really asking that question? Obviously, you're out of touch with what the students need.
This pandemic is eventually going to go away, at least I hope so.
You're out of touch with what the students need. That's the problem.
We, I think we asked that question before, why can we have this hire as a contractor or some, some position else? Why do we hire as a permanent position even if we know that this pandemic is eventually going to go away and we survive very well without these tough positions?
Technology is going to be increasing no matter what.
If you keep interrupting me, I don't have any more questions.
That's what school is all about.
All right, thank you.
Do you know the future? It's technology.
Thank you, sir. I know he did, he did not. At the end, you'll get a chance, you'll get a chance.
Rebuttal's right down, even though it came up twice already. Last time he told me, I can't get rebuttals. Don't start my time until I say my name. Sunshine Law, Crystal, Middlesex County. Dr. Bregan, don't, don't, they can hear me? It's all right. Don't apologize for ever saying the truth. It's not political when the person who's claiming it's not political happens to be sitting next to an active EDO member right now. So let's not, we got to keep politics out of the classroom. I wanted, I wasn't even going to come today, but I was watching through the YouTube live and I heard some very disgusting things. So I'll talk about them now. I would have came if it was Edison High, but this is other side of town for me, so I want to know, also let me know why there was a vote for the business administrator to retire, just because I just want to learn, you know, I'm saying why you guys had to do that, because I just feel if he wanted to, why he can't. But anyways, you'll tell me later. How many, I'll save that for later. Diversity is often used as a code word to promote people's racist agendas. We need to hire the most qualified people and not hire people based off their racial background? Sorry about that. I like Eric Clapton. So I'll start back again. Diversity is often used as a code word to promote the racist agendas. We need to hire the most qualified people and not hire people based off their racial background. Why don't they say what they really mean? Because if he came up here and said, hire more Asians, their racism and communist ideology would be out there in the open for all to see, would be too obvious for them to do something like that. So they have to disguise their racist agenda by pretending to be anti-racists, by claiming they want a more diversified hiring process. What do you mean by this? Do you mean, let's hire less white people, black people and Hispanic people? Don't just come up here and make comments. Be more specific in your comments when you're making them. If I'm getting a hurling accusation, I'll come, Jerry knows, I come full force with my accusations. I don't hide nothing. You guys got to keep your radical left wing politics out of the classroom. I shouldn't even be talking about this right now. There's more important things to discuss, but again, people are bringing their left wing radical politics. I understand, you know, these days it's a disgust. It wasn't like this when I was growing up, but 2020 is a disgusting time. We're never going to get, forget the campaign flyers that were disguised as racial flyers. I'll repeat that again, they were campaign flyers. They weren't actual racist. They were made that way to look that way. Now, performance reviews, were they talking about the teachers to have a performance review? Or was that for a student? When they were mentioning, Dr. Bregan, when they were mentioning performance reviews before, because I couldn't hear too well, is that for a teacher or a student?
No, that's from the state. They come in and evaluate everything. Paperwork and things like that.
So the, oh, so the whole school or not?
Whole system. It's called NJCUSEC.
All right. Do they do individual teachers?
No.
All right, good, good. I want to know how many BOE members have relatives employed by the BOE? That includes even the candidates that are going to come in, but I'll re-ask back in January at the reorg meeting, since they're not here, they don't have to answer. It doesn't matter if they're teachers, security guards, support staff, or just in Edison Teachers Education Association, they could just be retired member. I'd like to know that. I'd like to know if any BOE members for any reason have any conflicts of interest that in the past they had had to abstain from voting. Not for any reason in particular, just because I want to learn. All right. So who's the timekeeper here? How much time do I got, Tony?
You have one minute and 30 seconds.
One minute and 30 seconds. So, okay, we come up here, we're talking about, yeah, this isn't political. You shouldn't have apologized, but because you're a white man, you have to apologize. These days, we're always guilty. So, I mean, again, the person who came up here claimed what they're stating is not political is sitting next to an active EDO member. When they, when it's time for their rebuttal, can they be more specific? Do they want to hire more Asians, more Indians, more Chinese, Jamaicans? Because for me, that's the definition of racism. If you're not hiring the most qualified person for our children, then our children, they're the ones that are going to get screwed over at the end. And I want him to explain that for me a little better. If he's going to say we need more diversity, that means we have to hire less of a certain people. Who are those people? And he wants to hire more of a certain people, explain to the public who these people are. We deserve to know who these people are. People need to stop hiding their racism and their radical left wing agendas. These people are racists pretending to be anti-racists and we need to call them out. You got to look your tyrants right in the eyes and you got to call them out. You got to tell them, stop the bull. Sorry, Rosenfeld versus New Jersey, I can curse, I won't do it again. That's my time?
I like to keep it clean. Yep. Thank you, sir.
And I'll come back up here for rebuttal after I hear what other members have to say.
First time caller right here.
Because it's COVID, I just want to say, you know, I should have been spending my time saying, you know, for all your families and yourselves. And I'm a big fan of Beth Maroney and after January, I'm going to be a little pissed off that you, Beth Maroney won't be here because she defends Greek Armenian genocide and many other things.
One more meeting. I got you.
My name is Anne Betaglia and I live in Edison. And I just-
Hold on that mic a little bit.
Oh. And I just have a question about how the school calendar wording is put together and who actually does that and approves it? Because I'm seeing online your vacation days, September Yom Kippur, Diwali, winter break, spring break. No mention of the word Christmas or Easter. And I'm wondering why that is? Because obviously, your winter break is because it's Christmas, December 25th, but it says winter break. So I'm wondering why it's okay and it's, if you're going to mention the reason for one holiday, mention for all of them or none of them. There's nothing wrong with saying Yom Kippur, Diwali, nothing at all, but then why do you go to winter break, spring break? That's my question.
Good point. Dr. Bregan?
Should I sit down?
Yeah, so you can sit down. We'll answer.
Those are good points. The calendar is typically done with a committee. We try to get representation from all of our collective bargaining units as well as members of the board and members of the administrative team. And then we propose it to the Board of Education for approval. We actually had three years approved last March. We adjusted this current calendar a few times, but points will take and we'll take it into consideration. We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
I understand.
Ms. Harris?
Marg O'Harris, 43 Oak Hills Road. I want to take this opportunity to express my heartfelt gratitude to Dan Michaud. Dan has given almost 35 years of service, wonderful service to this district. And I'm so saddened about the fact that he is going to be leaving, especially because the circumstances have become so untenable for him to stay. And I'm in, I'm in denial because I really like to think that there's going to be a way that he can stay with us. I'm hoping that there's something, some circumstance that can change that can convince him to stay and continue to serve the board as well as he has. He was a pleasure to work with when I was serving on this board. And I think the entire district and all who are served by the district owe this man a huge debt of gratitude. And I want to thank you so, so much, Dan, and hope that this really isn't going to be goodbye. So thank you.
Thank you. First time, first time speakers, first time speakers before I get into the second. Okay, sir? And please make sure any responses are directed through me. We're not going to have it back and forth, you know, with the audience. Thank you, sir.
It's really funny that, you know, the Tony, last night, somebody, one of my, you know, I'm an admin for two WhatsApp groups. He's part of my WhatsApp group. And he was contesting, he was attacked. I have removed a couple of people who created nonsense. He was thanking me personally, thank you, admin, for removing those people. So when I do favors, he thinks it is great. Now he lost the election. We, as a parents group, work with only the BOE members. So, last night, some, one parent asked, "The guy in the IT department hired his relative?" He said, "It's a privacy loss, nothing to be discouraged." But now he's courageous and brought his nephew or whoever it is. So, had he mentioned that, the issue would have been closed last night. Otherwise, there would not have been doubts that are still pending. The second question, I'm sitting next to the EDO person, but to be honest, I've been a fifteen-years-registered Republican. Never stepped down to EDO office, never met any EDO member. I meet most of the BOE members because it's my right. I voted, I chose the people, it's a non-partition. Can't people see it's a non-partition BOE group, non-democratic, non-republican? I am proud to be Republican for twenty years, but I still work with any party member because this is the only non-partition group. Otherwise, I would go and show my attitude with council or with mayor or officer others. So, don't attribute that I'm sitting next to somebody. So, I will go and sit somebody in a different group. Then are you going to attribute motives of that group with me? No, absolutely not. I deny those allegations. The last one is, Tony, you may be a tech person and a chief architect managing twelve thousand people in a big multi-billion-dollar company, a banking financials company. I know what it means. Seventeen thousand eight people are already doing, I support Shannon that. This is already a breakcoming Thanksgiving, and we are also having Christmas. We don't need full-time three IT people. It could be temporary workers, otherwise, after the pandemic is over, those three people must be sitting idle. It can be reused, you can give lot of, because in the corporate world as an executive, I also change my story. But Tony should have been man enough to say those things last night on the WhatsApp to stop this nonsense, and he's brave enough to come and complain about me that I won't be BOE group. Yes, I'm an admin for the BOE group. You are a member of it. If you don't like it, quit tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, go ahead. You only get one rebuttal, so. No, just one, he was answering a question.
So, just on how many tech people we have, somebody in the hallway just responded. I questioned him about that, and he told me that, I think the district is smaller than ours, and they have nineteen tech people. So, you know, we're, we're, we're how many kids? They're smaller than us, and they have nineteen, and we have eight. So, you know, let's look at other districts and don't just say, "Hey, we only need this amount or that amount." If there's, if there's districts that have eighteen, nineteen, twenty tech people, why can't we be responsible enough to have enough tech people for us? If our tech director says, "We need more tech people," then let's hire more tech people. Again, it's the trust factor that the board thinks they know better than the people that we are hiring. If that's the case, then the board is irresponsible in the people you are hiring. Hire responsible people, then that can make the right decisions for the district. Don't hire people and then start trying to tear apart everything that they do. My boss at my new job, I started in September, said to me, "I hired you, I trust you to do the job, go do the job." That's what I do. He doesn't pick apart everything I do. As board members, it's again on you. Hire people you trust to do the job or get rid of them, fire them, and get a whole new staff. But don't just come to these board meetings with accusations. That's on you guys to have the right people in place. If you don't put the right people in place, you're not doing the job that the residents have asked you to do. We have voted you in to hire the right people. So, do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I, can I make a comment?
You wanna wait until the end, or we got one more speaker?
Well, I just wanna say, "Trust and verify." That's what we are here for. We're here to held the administration responsible, okay? Held them accountable. That's what we are here for. We are not here to rubber stamp. We are not here to rubber stamp. We are not here to, you know-
Alright, alright, alright.
Would you come, yeah, we do let them do their job, but we trust and verify, okay? What we are saying, we are not saying we're not hiring these tech people. We're saying, consider them as temporary, as contractors. Forty-seven thousand dollars on a salary and thirty thousand dollars on the, on the, on the benefits. We're talking about eighty thousand dollar job here. It doesn't matter how much I make. I do different jobs.
Alright.
Okay? So, this is gonna be permanent. It's gonna be hitting us moving forward every single year. That's what we're discussing here. We're not saying that we're not hiring them. You just twist the facts.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. She. Yes?
I find it highly, oh, Christo, Middlesex County. I find it highly suspicious that if some of my answers weren't, I mean, some of my questions weren't answered, so I'm gonna have to go back and see what they were. Were we talking about the support staff right now?
Yes. The three technicians.
Three hirings in the support staff?
Yes, the three technicians.
So, one of them being that Anthony D. Pasquale?
No.
A relative of that Anthony D. Pasquale? Matthew Conway?
No relation to anyone here.
No relation to anyone here? And Ryan Hess?
No relation to anyone here.
Oh, so they're just complaining about this one?
I, no, I don't think they're complaining.
I'm not, you know, Edison does have a history of, of hiring their own people, hiring family members of cops and political people all the time, but so... But like you said, everything has to be proven. This guy could actually be very qualified, and I don't even know it. I, you know what I'm saying? So, I'm not even gonna speak anymore on that, I'll move on. There were some other questions that I had. So, how many BOE members have relatives employed by the BOE? Whether they are teachers, security guards, support staff, retired members of Edison Teachers Education Association? Do any BOE members, for any reason, have any conflicts of interest that in the past have caused them to abstain from voting for any reason? Doesn't matter what that reason was. I also asked the question about, I'm interested to know why we had to take a vote tonight for the business administrator, because that was one of the things to... How much time do I have, attorney? Beautiful, beautiful, alright. So, I'm a big fan of Beth Maroney.
You don't have to use it all, though.
No, I'm, I'm, I never waste my time.
Some people get tired.
It's alright.
You're rebuttling, you're not asking, you should not, you're not supposed to ask new questions.
No, you're right.
You know that, right?
Yeah, but, you know, everyone else, the moment they pass the line, I'm equally allowed to do what they do, otherwise, it becomes bias and discrimination. So, let's hush on that and let me continue talking.
Sure.
I'm a big fan of Beth Maroney. I love you, Beth Maroney. I'm gonna be pissed off a little bit when January comes, and you're not gonna be here no more. But I'm sure you can, you'll, you'll make another petition the next year. Or you'll run for something else. You should run for a higher office, I support you. You support, you were the only member up here to support the Greek Armenia genocide. You were the only member up here to say, "Yes, the Jewish Holocaust happened." Everyone else would've kept their mouth shut. Recently, the people of Armenia have lost the Nagorno-Karabakh region. Turkey is sending their radical terrorists that came from Syria and Armenian people, the Christians right now, they're struggling. There's a genocide of the Christian people in Syria. And in Armenian, I'd like for the Edison BOE to acknowledge that. What are you gonna do? I had four minutes, you know? Four minutes is four minutes. It's not about left versus right. It's not about being Republican or Democrat. Some people are nationalists. Some people like to see their own people. So, when I was speaking about politics earlier, it doesn't have to be American politics and the mindset that the average, everyday American person wouldn't understand. I would understand, it's a little bit different. In America, we have left versus right. Some people, that they're nationalist, it doesn't matter if you're Democrat or Republican, they just vote their own people, and that's the truth of the matter. So, how many minutes do I have left?
One minute and fifty seconds.
I just wanna say, God bless you, Beth Maroney. Who are the other members that aren't gonna be here no more? I'm a little bit surprised.
Ms. Patel?
What's up, Ms. Patel? From one thousand, I went to four thousand votes, so I just wanna let you know. The platform, hell yeah, hell yeah. The platform of human decency is rising, anti-corruption is rising. Again, I wanna say I love you, Ms. Beth Maroney. How many meetings do we have left with her?
Is there a proposal in the future?
There, there doesn't have to be. She, she respects the American Constitution, and she acknowledges the Jewish Holocaust and the Greek-Armenian genocide. And that's enough for me to vote for her all, all the time in the future. I'm upset that you didn't put your name in there, because when I want someone up there, I want someone who represents my morals and values. So, when you're gonna be gone, I'll have to search now for someone who's gonna support my morals and values. I hope next year you put your name in again. I think you're overqualified, Beth. You're also on, you're also on something else. What was it, a Holocaust board or something like that? Genocide board or whatever?
Yeah, I worked for the New Jersey Commission on the Holocaust.
So, so when you're not a member anymore, we're not gonna have an active BOE member on that board anymore? That, that's gonna go vacant? Or someone else here gonna take interest and would like to become a member of that board?
Well, we could get Mrs. Maroney to come back and appraise us on certain ideas.
That's right, that's right. But, but we still always have to have an active member, otherwise, you know...
We'll see who would like to volunteer.
Jerry She, would you like to volunteer? I think you would like to defend the Greek Armenia genocide and the Jewish Holocaust.
I think, I think you're more appropriate, so.
Time's up. Thank you, Mr. Christo. Happy Thanksgiving.
I'm gonna look forward to Jerry She's leadership on the issue of the Greek and Armenia Holocaust.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, cool. Alright, thank you.
Alright. Last, anything else? Thank you very much, public portion is closed.
Ralph, can I ask you? Shirley here.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Yes. I just wanna add that I think the existing of the board member is not just to sit here and rubber stamp. Yeah, I don't agree that we should just hire someone and then just sit back and do nothing, no question asked. This, the reason we're here is to verify and check. And these three positions, three new positions added almost two hundred fifty thousand dollars to tech peers permanently. And I, now I really want to know why. Because we have, you said we have a lot of technical issues, probably. So, there are two types of technic, technology problems, software and hardware. For hardware, I don't think I can see why that would jump high, because nowadays, students keep their laptop at home. So, there's less damage, because they don't carry it on bus, they don't carry it around. They stay still at home. So, I'm not sure I can see that hardware issue would just go up really high. So, if it's software issue, then the technology support people really need to log into the student's computer, do a real-time diagnostic, and help them either install software or debug or do something like that. I don't, I wonder how much that has happened, really? Because I've been in parents' group with five hundred people. That, that gentleman right there has a WhatsApp group with six hundred parents. I haven't hear anything about, you know, a really big issue or a really big increase of software issues, software issues. So, I know Bernie, you're not the, you know, technology guru here, so maybe this, this must comes from a recommendation from our technology director. So, I really want to see, what's the data to back up this deposition? Can we get some data? What's the number, what's the big number jump? What actually caused this rush to hire?
We will definitely get that data, and we did discuss that with the Finance and Facility Committee. I believe it was in August, but we'll get that data, and I'll ask Mr. Barker to put that together, and we'll share with the board.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. Dr. Chen, anything? Mr. She? Good? Ms. Mediker? Ms. Powell? Ms. Dachik?
Good.
And Mrs. Maroney?
Yes, thank you, Ralph. First of all, Christos, thank you very much for your kind words. I have to tell you, every time you come to the podium, I am very proud of you, because you're not always the most articulate, and sometimes your arguments are difficult to follow, but you know what's going on. You are a young man, an Edison product, who cares enough to come to board meetings, and that is most commendable. So, thank you very much. And as Christos mentioned, the seeds in the timekeeper are rapidly dwindling for me on the board, and I would be remiss if I didn't make these comments before I go. Last week, an editorial appeared in the Star Ledger newspaper with the headline, "Racist Flyer Roofs: Another Depressing Scandal for Edison." The Star Ledger is one of the most recommended, recognized newspapers in the United States. It's very prestigious. So, the fact that the editorial board thought enough to come out with this, this article is very impressive on their part. I want you to just think for a minute about the two words in the headline, "Depressing Scandal." Isn't it sad that scandal is what our wonderful town has become known for? Jerry, there are a few things that I would like to direct to you personally. Three years ago, I was proud to run with, for the Board of Education with you. We sat next to each other during our first term, and although we didn't always agree, I had the greatest respect for you and the contributions that you made to this town. When we started our campaign in 2017, you called me and told me that Mayor Lenke was supporting the Unity Team and invited me to walk in the Indian Parade in August. I asked him, "Are you sure Mayor Lenke is endorsing us?" I've never heard of such a thing as a mayor endorsing. And, oh yes, he said, "We have the endorsement of the mayor." And that is where the Board of Ed became political. Jerry walked in that parade with a banner that said, "Mayor Lenke's Team." And sure enough, Mayor Lenke had not endorsed the Unity Team. And although when we traveled with him from time to time and went to homes to campaign, and the mayor was there, he would introduce us, and he would say, "We're a good team." But he never said, "Vote for these people." And then, during the campaign, you started putting out flyers. And you never consulted Fow or Paul or me about those flyers. And some of them were vile. In fact, you had to hire a lawyer to defend the Unity Team if a pending lawsuit was filed against us. And believe me, I went nuts about that. I've never had a lawsuit filed against me, and I found out about it on the night before. I was having a major surgery, and it did not feel good for me whatsoever. So, the lawsuit was threatened by people who were offended by those flyers. And when I ran for the Board of Ed the first time, I ran with two very distinguished gentlemen, Kyle Toms and Dr. Chang Hui Shen, who now is at the United Nations working, pretty impressive guy. And we spent a thousand dollars on our campaign, five hundred of which my Uncle Jerry donated to us, and we bought our signs with that. I don't know for sure how much we spent when we ran in 2017, but it was upwards of at least twenty thousand. Where that money came from, I couldn't tell you. I don't know. We were not included in the discussions on anything financial. So, going back to that flyer, I was appalled when I saw some of these flyers coming out and the things that they said. And they were very clearly Jerry's handiwork with some of his friends. And that is why, on the day the racist flyer came out, I said to myself, "Jerry did this." Because Jerry knows how to write disgusting flyers. And no matter how many times, Jerry, you deny it, your denials don't ring true to people, because if their denials did ring true with people, if they did ring true-
Mrs. Maroney? Mrs. Maroney?
You're out of order, President, you're out of order. She's a member of this board, it's her time, rubber tools in order.
She'll, she'll get her time. She will get her time. Mrs. Maroney, I just wanna be, make you well aware that you're making accusations and allegations.
I, I had legal advice on what I'm saying.
Go ahead. Excuse me.
held, uh, potentially personally liable, um, in the event that anything is libelous slanderous.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I, let me clarify, this is my opinion. This, this opinion is not of the rest of the board. This is what I thought when I saw the flyer.
I just wish you could say anything and make it-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cristo?
Um, I, I also think, I kind of feel sorry, uh, in a way, for the people who made the flyer, because they didn't think it through when they made it. They didn't think about the ramifications and how they would hurt people in Edison Township when they mailed this out. And the person who was most hurt in the incident was Falguni Patel, because she was victimized and continues to be victimized every time that flyer is brought up in public. And that is very rarely mentioned. Um, so anyway, I, I just think, moving forward, um, I would ask Jerry to be very, very careful. Um, and the other thing I want to talk about is the zero percent raise on the budget that, um, Mr. She's team has proposed for next year's budget. And so the truth of the matter is with that, withholding to a zero percent increase, that we've already promised in the contracts to the people who work for us that they are getting a raise, which automatically means that the budget has to go up. Now, Mr. She is suggesting that we look at all the vendors, which is a good idea. It's always good to see if we can cut money there. Um, but if you want to keep a zero percent budget, something's going to have to go. And it could be teachers, and it could be Paris, and it could be secretaries, and it could be nurses, and it could be custodians. It, it, we could, we stand to lose people, we stand to lose programs by keeping to such a statement as that is. So, with, um, with that, I'll close, and thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Motion, motion to adjourn.
That's why I asked for it.
Uh, excuse me, no, the public caution's over, I'm sorry. Motion to adjourn.
I love you.
Mr. She and Mrs. Conway. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.